We call the Board of Education to be proud of you for your part of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. President, I move that we approve the agenda with following amendments. First, additional certified and classified ESL actions, item number E3. Revision to number E4A and E4B. Bids for Horace J. Goodness School, revision to count number 11. Add item G4, 2015, 2016, calendar update. Motion by Laura. Second by Jean. Any discussion? All those in favor who can raise their hand. Motion carries. Okay. We are ready for Garfield's Early Childhood Center building presentation. Josh, do you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. Don't be shy. Good evening. Thanks for having us today. I'm just going to talk for a couple minutes and then I'm going to let our leadership team take the rest of the presentation. I'd like to introduce our leadership team. First is Sarah Geers. She's an ALF teacher for us. Dana Becker is the coordinator for our Parents as Teachers. Andrea Baker is our halftime instructional coach and then halftime ESL interventionist. Melanie Garrison's hiding in the back. She's one of our Early Childhood's Bed Teachers. Karen Kyler's another one of our Early Childhood's Bed Teachers. And then Megan Becker is our migrant three-year-old teacher. And then also in the audience, Margaret Lacy is one of our speech pathologists. Heidi Kundup is one of our Early Childhood's Bed Teachers. Sister Janice and Karen Finale are both with Parents as Teachers. Did I miss anybody? Did I get everybody? Oh, and Angie. I'm sorry, I didn't see back there Angie. And Angie Guzman is also one of our Parents as Teachers. To get started, this is just some numbers that we have. And I will tell you that I had my secretary pull these numbers for us on the second when we started putting the presentation together. These numbers have changed a little bit and I was going to have her update that today and then she was sick today. This is as of February 2nd, but right now, as you can see, we've grown considerably since September 20th. On the 20th, we had 118 students that qualified for ESL services. We're up to 242 as of the second. We had 136 students on IEPs and now it was 187. It's over 200 as of today. I don't know the exact number, but I do know we're over 200 students on IEPs. Building-wide, our student population is at 419 and we're at 501 on the second, which if you look, the first year that we were open, we were at 518 when we ended the school year. So if we keep going, I'm projecting that we'll be about 535 by the end of the year. And then Parents as Teachers is currently serving 214 families. So it's a busy place. Some of the programs that we have at Garfield, we have our Early Childhood Special Education Program, which we have 12 of those classrooms. We have our ALF classrooms, which is our four-year-old at-risk program, and we have six of those classrooms. We have Megan's our lone three-year-old migrant teacher. And then we have Parents as Teachers. And then we also have the Migrant Family Literacy Program, which is targeted to our adult Some of the assessments, and I'll pass some stuff around. Sarah, do you want to do that for me? Do you want to give them each one of these? And I apologize, they're black and white. I will email Dr. Aetha some color versions if you'd all like to see it in color. This year, we started using the MYAGDAS assessment, which stands for Individual Growth Developmental Indicators. And there's a math component to that and there's a literacy component to that. In the math component, it measures number naming, oral counting, one-to-one correspondence, and quantity comparison. And then on the literacy piece, it measures picture naming, rhyming, alliteration, sound identification, and then which one doesn't belong. And then along with that, we also do the PBBT, or the Peabody Picture Vocabulary Test. And we do that at the beginning of the school year and at the end of the school year to kind of measure progress. MYAGDAS we do at the beginning of the year, in the middle of the year, and then in the spring when our school's out. And I put some of the data up here. I didn't put all that stuff on there because I didn't want to bore you all if you want to see numbers in more detail. But for example, this is some of our three-year-olds. And these tests are all based on age. And so Megan uses this test in her classroom and then we had a couple. Melanie, I think, is using it. And a couple other of our Early Childhood's Bed Teachers did it with the three-year-olds. And we're just kind of trying it to see if this is an assessment that we want to use. And so as you can see, if they're in green, that means that they're benchmarked. That's where we want them to be. The yellow is some risk. The red is high risk. And then the black is discontinued. That means that they weren't able to complete the pre-assessment to go into the assessment to even measure it. And so those kids would, for lack of better terms, they would be in red also. And so you can kind of see, we've seen some pretty good gains with our three-year-olds. Also, as you can see, we had 19 more students that tested in the winter window than they did in the fall because of our increased enrollment. And then this is for our four-year-old population, the same thing. As you can see, 56 more students took this assessment in the winter than they did in the fall. We're seeing some good growth there. We went from 21 students at benchmark to 77 and 143 with some risk versus 116, but pretty good growth.
I asked a question on the discontinued. I'm not sure I understand what that means. Does that mean they were in the red and was testing and then they couldn't take the test no more?
No. What happens is they, when you take the test, there's four sample questions that they have to do to, it's kind of practice to get them ready for the test. And if they can't answer the questions on the sample questions, then we can't give them the test. And so they can't even go further to even take the test. Yes, sir? And then this is math. And like I said, all of our assessments that we did, you guys have the data in front of you, but we did oral, I did oral counting to kind of give you a visual. We had 83 more students that took this assessment in the red versus the blue. Now, the reason for that is, in math, they can take this assessment as a three-year-old and in the literacy component, they have to be four or three. And so that's why we have so many more students that took this test. But we had 38 is all that we had that were at benchmark at the beginning of the year and we're at 130. Still got a ways to go, but we're definitely seeing some good growth. And I'm really anxious to see what it looks like at the end of the school year. The PBBT, the Peabody Picture Vocabulary Test, we give that in August and we won't give that again until May, but this kind of gives you an idea of where we're at. 302 of our students, this, we take their chronological age and compare it to what their, basically their age equivalent would be on their vocabulary. So 302 of our students were performing below their age equivalent in vocabulary. And six were right at their grade age equivalent and 65 were performing above their age equivalent. So vocabulary is a big issue for us because of our population. When you look at our high ESL students, we have a large student population that's second language learners and we have a pretty significant special education population. And all of the students struggle with language. And so we've really targeted language as a building and done a lot of things to try to focus on language. And this kind of gives you an idea. This is our students that we had last year. So you can see where we were when we started the year and then where we ended the year. We made some growth. Still got a long ways to go, but definitely saw some good growth with our kiddos for the year last year. And we had 60 more, four more students that took that test at the end of the year than we did at the beginning of the year too. All right. I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Geers and let her kind of talk about our ALF program a little bit.
These are pictures of my kids. In this particular, these particular pictures, my kids are working at centers. On this day, they were making letters out of Play-Doh. It was an independent center and they had to pick a letter that they knew and then create it out of Play-Doh. So they're working on letter recognition and also find motor skills because they definitely need that at this level. These are just a couple more. Our program focuses on the at-risk and so all of these kids fall into that category.
And there's eight different criteria, criteria that the kiddos have to meet in order to be considered at-risk.
Single parents.
They come from a single-parent household. One of the parents didn't get a high school diploma. They qualify for free reduced lunch. Second language learners. They work with the Department of Children and Family Services.
Migrant.
If they qualify for migrant services. What's the other one, Darren? In front of me. Oh, if they're, if they have a developmental delay. Karen?
Well, we were doing construction for the last few weeks and my kids, we had made the Three Little Pigs houses on this big box. And I was working at my center and this is an independent play center. And I heard all this chatter going on and all of a sudden, I turned around and they have the tools and they're demolishing the house. And my one parent was like, "No, no, no, no." I was like, "No, leave them alone." They are in demolition mode and they had their pliers and their hard hats and they were tearing this house all apart. And you can see, it's just a total disaster. And I was like, "Wow, you guys look like you're doing the bank over there, bisonic." And so that gave us an opportunity to talk about our community and get some social studies live in action. Go ahead and go to the next one. But they had an absolute blast. And so then I told them, I said, "Well, you're going to have to be like the dump trucks. You are going to have to clean up our mess." And so they quickly got involved and more than just these three, but those are just the ones I captured. But they were putting all the stuff into the trash can and they were labeling that this was the straw house and this was the brick house and this was the stick house. And the wolf had come and made a terrible mess. This was two weeks after the story. So I thought that was great vocabulary and language development in full sentences and retelling the story from the back to the front. Go ahead. And this little guy we had last year, and this is a little video I want you to watch of his development. You can see he's extremely delayed. Can you make it play? But he is now beginning to interact with this little music box.
It worked.
It did work. Anyway, he is now smiling and we have a little button that we programmed so that he can say good morning to the other children. And he's now giving high fives to some of the other kids. And this is a little guy that we really didn't think that we had much more than brainstorm activities. So I'm like super excited. This is his third year with me. He'll move on to Victor and Alice in the fall. And hopefully this one works.
Or not.
Is that working, the video part? Oh, man. I wanted to see, I wanted you guys to see my kids in action. They, I had covered some blocks to make it like ice and they were building towers and all different kinds of structures when we did the story of the mitten. And they had little characters that they were retelling the story. And my afternoon classes, my class that has not had a whole lot of language and to see them interacting and actually playing with each other was just like super exciting for me to see. And this one little girl in the pink is kind of the instigator that was, hopefully they can get it to play. And again, I was working at a center and I just happened to catch them out of my peripheral vision and grabbed my camera and just started video. So then I had to get parent permission to have them here since this is live on BBS. It's not going to work.
It's not going to work.
It worked at the center. And then again, this little girl, this was so cool because I had this big mitten and they were putting all the characters in, in sequence by having the actual characters. And so you can see, not just, it's not just play. They're sequencing the story of the mitten with all the animals and then the bear, he sneezes because of the mouse tickling and they have the bear and they stick him in and then they stick the mouse on top of him and he sneezes and she runs all over the room scattering the animals all over the room, just like the story. And this other little girl was so fun to see those two interacting together because one has lots of language and the other one doesn't have as much. And so it was just really, really exciting seeing them get involved and excited about learning. And you know, the Kansas standards that we have align now with the Common Core for Kinder. And this just helps us to really make that bridge by having them be able to act out things and hands-on.
Megan, your videos probably aren't going to work either.
I teach the theory of migrant program and my students are working with Play-Doh and numbers and they were stamping numbers in the Play-Doh, having to identify the number and then using the jewels to count out the same number. And you can see, this one, this boy is a little bit lower, so I used the paper to help him count out the jewels. And then here, they had a, we were doing construction, so they had a bulldozer, they had to cut it apart and then identify the numbers and put the puzzle back together. More of the Play-Doh center.
Cut it apart. We'll see. These are really cute because they got to tell you what they liked about school. They're not going to work. What's really cool about Megan's classroom is when we get the kiddos in August, some of the kids, they'll come off the bus and they can speak no English whatsoever. And they come off and they're scared and they're crying and they have no idea where they're at. They've never been in school. And by the time, by the time we get to this time of the year, you go into a classroom and they're talking and completing sentences. It's just really exciting to see them when we get them in August versus where they're at now and where they'll be with us when they leave us in May. I apologize, the video's been working. All right, Ms. Becker?
Okay. I wanted to talk a little bit about Parents as Teachers. This is really a big celebration year for Parents as Teachers because 25 years ago, USD 457 and the Board of Education said yes to doing the pilot program for Parents as Teachers. And that's just huge to think that you guys actually have allowed this for 25 years. Part of what the Parents as Teachers Program has is we have personal home visits for all of our families. We have group meetings. We also have resource and referral for families if they're in need and we have a resource lending library. These are the statistics from July 1st to the 1st of February. And it's just amazing for me to see that already our staff has had 962 home visits. And something else that is really huge is that 24 of our children are on individual family service plans. And we have RRE-referred 26 additional children for full evaluations with Russell Child Development This is our playgroup. We use the library at Garfield to have our playgroup every Wednesday morning from 10 to, 10 to 11 o'clock. It is very successful. It gives parents a chance to visit with other parents, to talk about their parenting, to build up their parenting skills. It also gives the children time to learn how to socialize and interact and take turns. So that's some of the pictures that you're seeing now. We have been having on average every Wednesday, anywhere from 20 to 25 children. It has been very successful. And this is part of the story time. You can see that the parents and the children are all trying to imitate, so they're getting their taste of story time at a very young age. And here's some more of our families. One thing I wanted to mention, I passed out some paperwork. The Parents as Teachers Program is an international program. It is evidence-based with all the current neuroscience information that is being presented to the parents. And another thing that is very important is this is a literacy-based program. And the curriculum is also aligned with the state early learning standards. So kids are already starting to know what those standards are. Something very interesting that I just read this last week, there was an article that came out last month from the American Education Research Association. And it said that children who attend early childhood programs like Garfield, that they actually can reduce the child's need for special education in third grade up to 32%. Some of the early childhood programs can actually reduce the number of children going into special education in the third grade as much as 39%. So when you think about that special education programs are at least double what it costs to run a regular education classroom, we can really see what the benefits are of this Garfield Early Childhood Center. And I really think all of you should just be very proud that you live in Garden City.
Ms. Baker, you are up.
I get to talk about our parent engagement and our parent nights. First of all, I want to thank our district for valuing and encouraging the importance of family engagement. Dr. Jane Graff was invited out at the beginning of last school year and then this school year again to have professional development for us on the importance of family engagement. Last year, we were able to start working with her. Josh and I were able to sit down with her. She went over the state standards for parent engagement with us. We were able to look at what we were already doing in our building, see what we were doing well, look at areas that we could continue to work on. We already had in place family fun night, math and literacy night. Those are huge events at our school with hundreds of the parents and kids that came. And after working with her, we were able to come up with some other activities that we do on a monthly basis and they're kind of a smaller grouping. Each month, teachers are able to sign up for a different activity. They come up with the theme and activity for that night. They plan all the activities, get the parent notes ready. Our teachers are maybe able to make parent contact. So if they have a kid in their class that needs to work on that specific activity, they invite them in. So we can have, you know, between 30 and 70 families that come in that night and work on those activities. And then when they leave, they have activities then that they can take home. Let's see, the first slide that you saw, it was a science theme. So that night, kids were making homemade lava lamps, they were making Play-Doh, they were planting seeds, they were working on recycling. So all these things were, you know, things they could possibly have in their house and do these activities again at home. This next slide, what was the name of this one? What was your?
Homemade games and fun.
This was done when the temperatures were very, very frigid outside. Kids weren't able to go outside and play for recess. At home, they were shut in. So this night, I had so many parents that I heard talking about, they were so glad the school was open. They had kids up and moving and building and doing, you know, some physical activity because they had been shut in at home. So they really liked that. This activity was a math night. So kids are doing, there was concentration or memory. There was a math bingo game. This was just a paper plate where they had numbers written around it and they would put that amount of dots on a clothespin. So they were working on number identification, counting one-to-one correspondence, find motor skills with the clothespin, clipping it on. This next slide, they were working on sorting, patterning, graphing, working on least to most, just with cans you'd find in your pantry, working on colors. Here, they had different utensils out, so they were able to sort those. If you had your kid helping at home setting a table, working on that one-to-one correspondence. This next slide, kids are making the Play-Doh. I think we've got several slides of that.
That was real messy.
So, you know, working with your kid on being able to go through and read a recipe and follow the directions and bringing in math skills into this, counting and lots and lots of vocabulary, talking about how does it feel and how did you make this and different questions you could ask your kid. So through all of our parent activities, you know, we try, we get, have the parents come in, actually working with their child and then taking away activities that they continue to work on at home.
One of the things that I did put in the slide that I wanted to make you all aware of, this year, we have been working with, we've also been working with another outside consultant. Her name is Lindy.
Danny.
Thank you. Lindy Danny. And she, she's with TAZ and she's been working with us. And we're going to have a new classroom at Garfield next year in the special education part. And it's going to be a structured teach classroom is what we're going to call it. And it's going to be for our more significant kiddos that have the more severe delays, language delays and things like that. And we've been working with her. She actually, before she went to work at the state level, was a teacher in a classroom very similar to this. And so we've been kind of doing a lot of research and working on that. She's come in and worked with our staff a couple times this year. And we're going to go to Wichita and Derby next month to go observe some of those classrooms. And then our goal is, Melanie actually is going to, going to be the teacher that would have that. And so our goal is to have that classroom that's more structured and focused on what those kiddos need. And then Karen Kyler will be working with Melanie. And so as the kids are making that progress, we'll move them out of that room and into Karen's room as kind of a step-down classroom to see how they, how they react with a more intense curriculum. And if they do well, then our goal is to slowly move them back, back into the other classrooms. And so we're really excited about, about how that's going. Talking to Lindy and talking to the teachers and just the ideas that have come apart, come about because of that, I think it's, it's going to be really good for, not only those kids that are going to be in Melanie's classroom, but for the other kids too, because that's going to allow the teachers to, to individualize instruction, I think, more for the kids at the levels that they're going to need it at. You guys have any questions for us?
We've been talking a lot about parent involvement. I wanted to mention that one of my kids who is in the pictures doing the Play-Doh letters is here tonight. Elijah, can you give them all? Can you wave? So, we're excited to have them.
Do you all have questions for us?
I'm impressed with the movement, if I'm right word, through the assessments. Shows what you're doing.
That's in progress.
It's been a process for us. The testing, I think all of the teachers would probably say that we certainly felt our growing pains with that this year, just learning how to give that assessment and how to work through that. And so that's definitely been, been a process for us this year. But I think in the upcoming years, we'll definitely get better with not only giving the assessment, but then using that to drive our instructions. Mr. Root?
Yes. You know, that's just, just cool when you guys put on not only what you're doing, but even swinging by there and seeing everything going on with that building. It's such a unique facility and it seems to be working really well. I just wanted to ask, how's the space? Do you have enough space?
Yeah, we're in pretty good shape there. I have, I have the, we have the capability to add more classrooms if we need to. We have a couple of classrooms. Our migrant family literacy classrooms are using it and so they're, and it works really nice because they're teaching English to adults there. And so the whole, the whole idea is, is the parents drop the kids off for school and they can just go hit the classroom. And we, we have, we have some moms that are going, that are going in there. But as we, as we grow, if the need's there, then we would have to relocate them, but we could certainly, we could certainly open some more classrooms. And honestly, our ALF classrooms, I had, what'd we start out the year with? It was like 47, I want to say, that were on our waiting list for ALF. We could fill a classroom in the ALF, with the ALF students tomorrow. It's just, it's a funding issue because it's all, it all comes from the state grant and, you know, they don't seem to want to give us any extra money at this point.
I think there's more that haven't been identified as well. I think.
Yeah, I really do think that since this, since this center has been open the last two years as a full early childhood center, I think, and the sped teachers, I mean, I think they could probably speak more to this, but I think we're seeing. But I think we're seeing a lot more physicians that are, that are recommending the kids come to see us for screening. And wouldn't you guys agree with that? And so we're definitely, I mean, when I look at, we're at, I, I think it was 501 students is where we were at on February 2nd. We ended the year at 518. I mean, we're gonna be there before spring break. And, and we continue to get them, as soon as they turn three, you know, they transition to us from Russell. And, and then we pick up kiddos in, in the screenings. And, you know, last year, I think we averaged around 10. And we were, we're averaging 12, 14 kids that were, were doing full, you know, complete assessments on a month right now. So we're definitely identifying, which is great. I mean, we need, we need to get them here because I'm, I'm a firm believer in early intervention, so.
When we're on those numbers and that growth through the year, and you were sort of making comments indicating that's sort of normal. But that also you may hit an all-time high by the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
You know, I've, I've heard questions before about the early childhood center and where are they all coming from, kind of thing. Is this pretty, was this anticipated? Or are we in sort of a, a period of growth where we're getting more coming in than what we expected?
I don't know that we're getting more than what we expected. I think, I, I think a lot of it is, like I said, I think our physicians are, are helping in, to identify that. And I think just having the center now, I think word of mouth by other parents, I think is certainly helping. To give a good example, when, like our ELF classrooms, we would do enrollment in May, just like the elementary schools, like all the other schools would do. We do enrollment in May. And last year, we had all 204, I have 204 spots that we can, that we can put ELF students in. And by the end of the day, on that Friday, after, after enrollment, we were completely full. That's never happened before. We usually take the whole summer to fill up. And we're always full when we start the year, but it usually takes the summer. And we were there, we were there the first week of May. So I think definitely, as the center gets out there, I think people are, are seeing that. We continue to have parents show up. I mean, after Christmas, you always see some kids that move. And we, we had the kiddos that were on the waiting list for ELF and we put them in there. But we're still, we're still over 30 on the waiting list now. And so as we move kids in and, and take those kids off the waiting list as, as positions open up, we just continue to add on as the year goes on, so.
Well, helping to hit the ground running, just the great job that the staff and the facility is doing, I think just feeds into the kindergarten classes and all of those amazing, well, I think, high standards that we're holding our kindergarten kids to.
Yeah.
And then on the line. And so it certainly starts with you guys. And you seem to be doing an amazing job.
Well, thank you. It's more these folks than it is me, but they certainly make me look good, so.
Yes?
I, I wanna echo what Josh and the team said. We would love to take more kids if we had the funding to do it, if the state provided the funding to do it. And picking up on something Mr. Root said, as I talk to kindergarten teachers around the district, they see the tremendous difference that these folks make and that building makes, this program makes, as in preparation for kindergarten. They can see the difference over the last three years of what we've done before. What we did before was good. This is better. They've really stepped it up.
Just, you know, one of the great things about that is, you know, like, like Sarah or Melanie or any of, any of these ladies, when they were, when they were in the elementary schools, they were the only teacher that taught them. And so, you know, I'm having troubles with this or I'm not sure what to do here. There was nobody to ask. There was nobody to go to. And collaboration is, is, is a chore for us in our building. I mean, when we look at PLCs, it's really hard for us because our schedules are, you know, our early childhood schedule and our ELF schedule is, is different because of transportation issues. Now, I'm very excited because talking to, talking to Mr. Wilson at Transportation, it looks like we're gonna be able to all be on the same schedule next year, which will alleviate a lot of that. And this is something that I've been pushing for in the three years that I've been in Garfield, is to have us all on the same schedule so that we can have that, that time to collaborate in. So, but it certainly does make it a lot easier for them to, to share ideas and to work with one another. Cause it's just something that, that they never had the opportunity to do before. Most of them, Karen did a little bit of Florence Wilson because we had quite a few early childhood teachers there. But for the most part, it was just one classroom. So that, that's really exciting.
I think I have a question and maybe you or Dr. Dennis can, can address that. If, if you have 500 approximately students now, what would be the size that you would expect if you were to meet the needs of all of the children in our district? Are we talking 600, 1,000? I don't have a sense of what that would be.
It would be a lot. I, I would say it would probably double easily. Because I have parents that come in, every, every year, they'll come in and they'll want to enroll their, want to enroll their child. And they don't qualify for ELF, and they don't qualify for the early childhood, they don't qualify for the migrant classroom. They just don't qualify for any of the programs that we have. And so we have to turn them away. And so, you know, speaking as one of those parents that would have been turned away, I would have loved to have had, had the opportunity to enroll my kid in a program like that. But I would say hundreds, easily.
And that's even though we know from research that this is the age at which we can remediate any problems that they might have very, very early so that they don't have those in the future. This is really, you all do a wonderful job. And I know you have many different languages there and sometimes no language. And you do an amazing job. I really wish we were able to cover this more broadly. Because this is, this is where it really counts. This is where we can make the biggest gains, I think, for the future. Thank you.
And Josh, you did a great transition into the rest of the meeting where we talked about funding, collaboration, calendar. So I appreciate you spotlighting that as well.
Absolutely.
And just one more focus on the parent piece. Thank you, thank you, thank you for getting parents excited and involved in their kids' education. Cause doing that early is gonna just set the hook and those, that's gonna stay with those kiddos for their whole academic career, so. And that, you know, we can't mine the data that we get from how you helping the student helps the parents immerse into the community. So that's data that's just, you know, blue sky that we enjoy every day and those families enjoy every day in our community, so.
Well, and one of the really neat things about our parent nights, you know, last year, we really started doing that. We kind of focused on once a month, we'd have a topic and the teachers would sign up. And in the beginning, it was the parents would come and we would take the kids to another room and have like a little play area for them. And we would talk to the parents. And then it just kind of morphed into this, where the parents come, they bring their kids. And we try to make activities that they can do.
Learn on action.
Yeah, and, and it's all things that, that they can do at home that doesn't cost. I mean, empty water bottles and, and some, some vegetable oil and food coloring. And you can make a homemade lava lamp, you know, things like that. And so, and it's really turned into something that the parents really kind of look forward to, so. And that was all through the direction of the teachers. They really kind of recognized that and just kind of turned it into something that's become really, really fun, really fun to see.
And not just curriculum, just language and social skills and all those things that those kids are bringing home. Just, you know, in, in my career, you know, with patient care, I can't tell you how many times kids are taken out of school to come translate for their parents or their grandparents so that they can have an eye examination.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, that's pretty amazing how these families, their stu, their, their youngest child is a lot of times their link into our community.
Right.
And so investing in that relationship with that student in school is invaluable, so. Keep up the great work, not good, great work, so.
Thank you.
Our community needs you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm so excited to provide. Also, I want to say I appreciate how the community has responded to your center and the teachers on it. Because I know there's at least two up there who've been recognized, or three?
Three.
Three, sorry, I knew two. Three up there have been recognized as Crystal Apple Award winners. So thank you for all that you do because without you, we wouldn't be seeing the success that we're seeing.
Three years in a row. You've done very well, so.
No pressure.
Yeah, exactly.
Lauren, did you have a question?
That was my comment.
Oh, comment, great. Well, thank you, Laura, for bringing that up. That's awesome.